...workshop meeting, again, we really appreciate the attendance tonight, especially those members of our administrative team who'll help us, you know, through the agenda. You know, one of the things we're really trying to do with our workshop meetings is to really have the primary amount of, or the bulk of the discussions on these items at the workshop meeting, so our, to aid and facilitate a very smooth board voting meeting. It's also the kind of meeting where we hope to have, you know, the participation of folks, that's why it's so critical to have, you know, our administrative team here and other members of the public here to really kind of weigh in on items here as we go through and we have questions as a board. So, thank you all for being here this evening. Also, before I forget, I just want to say to the rest of the board members that we will have an executive session following this board workshop for legal purposes. So, I think this evening we'll start with a presentation, if I'm not mistaken, by Dr. Schlosser, and we'll introduce Dr. Schlosser. Hello, sir.
Hit the button, please. Don't need you for the camera. Hit the button, please. It'll turn green.
All right. Okay, well, each is the time. You guys have a lot of stuff going on tonight and later on. I mean, you had a chance to read everything I had written down in my report. I just want to highlight a few different things. First, I want to thank Dr. Phillips for allowing us to once again have our holiday concert. Of all the things on this, I want to highlight that because it was, it's great, it's great PR for our school, it's great PR for everything that we do. And we had five hundred, six hundred people jammed in our cafeteria, and on a Thursday afternoon at two o'clock, because it's important. And we were not permitted to do that for a while, and we had it for years, and then we were told we couldn't do it anymore, and I'm so glad grateful that we're able to do it again. It means so much to our faculty, to our parents, to our kids. It's like, it's like one of the special days of the year at school. We were so happy to have it back again, so, Dr. Phillips, thank you. And also, there's something that on my board report that I neglected to, to put on there. I would thank the board for sponsoring our e-mission. It's really cool if you guys ever want to come and see it. We do the e-mission in fourth grade, and we have them going on now. We used to just do one, we used to do one every, uh, fourth, one fourth grade class, we'd do it in another fourth grade class, and now we have them all going on at one time, and it is really, it's really a fun exercise for the fourth grade students. Learning experience. They work for about a month and a half or two months to prepare for it, and it's, it's a, it's, you know, signing together and distance learning, and it's all the, all the things that really make it a fun exercise and rewarding for the students and very educational. So, thank you, the school board, for, for sponsoring that, we appreciate it. Other than that, I think everything kind of speaks for itself. McBysker raised forty, over four thousand dollars for Trump vote for your heart, and, you know, I always pull the thinking about our building climate because it's so important. It's such an important thing to do, and we all work together to do, to do our best, and we have a great environment, and, you know, it's something that we all work at. It's like a good marriage. I know a lot about a good marriage, and, and that's what it takes. You've got to work at it. I made it almost two years, I'll tell you that right now. Right, it's skin and my teeth, almost two years, but anyway. Other than that, you had everything, you had a chance to read everything? Is there any questions? Are there any questions or anything? Yes?
Okay. You have one here about verbal behavior in classroom?
Yes.
Okay. I was just a little curious as to how that works, or how, like, how students get in there, or they get in there for...
Well, the students are, they're, they're nonverbal for the most part.
Oh, it's nonverbal?
And it's, it's, it's a nonverbal, uh, so we're teaching verbal behaviors. So, we're teaching, you know, with, with pictures, we're doing lots of different things, and a lot of discreet trial and error, and, uh, yeah, very structured, structured.
Autistic, autistic support?
Autistic support, yes.
Okay.
It's kind of neat, if you want to come and see it, it's kind of neat.
Yeah.
There are a lot of adults in the room, and there's a lot of stuff going on, but it's, it's tedious. It's, I really take my hat off to them because it's, the little bits of, of progress that they make isn't that, you know, the, uh, the kind of progress a lot of our other teachers see, but they're so grateful for the progress that they do make. It's, uh, it's really rewarding for them, it's really self, it's really intrinsic for them, for our staff.
I was just curious about your, um, your enrollment kindergarten and any activities you have going on for the students that are coming up?
Activities for the students?
Yeah, like, um, an open house, or what, you know, what happens?
Well, we do, we have kindergarten visit.
Okay.
And then we also have, uh, the, the parents come and bring them for, for an hour. Everyone's scheduled, that's registered, comes in May, uh, kindergarten visit.
In May, you said?
Yeah, we do that, and I think, I think we'll be first, first and second, maybe, right in there.
That's fine. You want to discuss what goes on with the parents?
I, I haven't thought about it as well.
My district manager, if he could...
Oh, okay.
Is it the same in all elementarys?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Then, never mind, I mean, if you, whatever. I don't know.
There, there is an event going on. We'll, you'll be getting a connected message will be going out, and as well as an email to our incoming kindergarten parents. Because of grant money that we applied for this past year through the Governor's Institute, we've done a couple of things with time to connect with our pre-K providers, but one of the things that we are doing is we are having and we're coupling with the Spring Into STEM Night.
Oh, yeah, I got that. Well, I saw it on Facebook, yeah.
Yeah, you probably saw it on Facebook, it's already on our website as well, and that invitation is going out to all of our incoming kindergarten children in the district. The first hundred children are receiving a really cool backpack that has our Exeter logo on it that says, "I'm an Exeter Eagle," and there are all kinds of school readiness supplies. It's a make and take workshop that our teachers were organizing, so there are all kinds of stations that the parents can take their child to that they'll engage in all kinds of readiness activities, and then there's a make and take portion for the children as well, and we've also invited some of our pre-K providers, they wanted to set up a table as well. So, we're expecting a really large outpouring of our incoming K students, but also along with our Spring Into STEM Fair, which is always a huge and successful event.
And then, so, in May, at each elementary level, the kindergartners and their parents, the pre-kindergartners, come with their parents for, for an hour?
I mean, with parents for an hour, I talked about, what goes on in kindergarten is around, snows is what happens.
And that's the same date for every elementary school?
No, we, we try to schedule so they're not on the same day.
Oh, okay.
But, uh, last few years, we've had some dates that overlap, but when I first started here, we used to have, we'd pick dates and we'd...
And then, um, you know, kindergarten for Exeter, it's full day, clearly, obviously, and so do the kindergartners actually come on that first day of school for the full day?
Yes.
Or is it, okay, they do?
We, we have a, another, we have a new student orientation as well. That's in August, and that information comes out after kindergarten visit.
So, they come back again in August?
They come back in August, and they do a bus ride around the community, try to get the bus on two wheels, you know, take them off a little bit, but, and then they come in and see their classroom. By that time, the teachers generally have their room set up, and a lot of times, the teachers are internally committed to teachers, because, and, and, you know, they obviously have the class, and, not only that, but, yeah, we don't, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Two questions.
Okay.
I just want to say, ham raffle for Easter also, as I was at your school with Dr. Phillips when they did the Christmas ham raffle, and that's just an awesome thing, I really went to see what they did for Easter.
So, we always get like one extra one for someone that's special, or something where you have, someone came back from knee surgery, and, and not knee surgery, knee replacement. And, you know, so we always look for some situation where there'll be one person and hams or six dollars or whatever, and this year, we had a psychologist who's brand new, she was her first, it was her first time. She was so proud, holding a ham up. So, now she says that her friends didn't believe her, her parents, her friends, no one believed that she wanted a ham. So, she's in my office, and, and she's all up to ham, I'm taking pictures of her on my phone, so she can send it to all her friends, and the next day, she told me how, you know, her, her daughter was like, so pumped to wish they could do that. We can do that in our school, her sister thought it was a school, somewhere in that , that, that way.
I think it's a great, great tradition, and, you know, I hope that that continues to make smarter schools do it, too.
It's fun, it's fun.
Uh, the two questions that I had for the Spanish Club, I was wondering if you could kind of expand on the effectiveness that the high school students have coming in to talk about, talk about Spanish, speak Spanish and teach Spanish, and I'm curious to find out if there are any other organizations or activities that are like that, where the high school students or junior high students are coming down to spend time with the elementary students? And then the other question that I had is, I think, might have been two years ago, where you had kind of stated that the observation techniques or forms that you had for teacher observations were burdensome, and I was just wondering what kind of, what kind of effort goes into the observation that you have left, that you're talking about in here, and if there's anything that the board or the administration can do to help you with that?
Okay.
Or help make it easier?
So, the Spanish students, you know, it's, it's, we have a range of kindergarten for fourth grade, so we try to put the kids into, you know, like abilities, and based on what they can learn, and they're learning things like the months, they're learning the days, they're learning to count, they're learning different nouns, different kind of things. The high school kids love it, I mean, they can't wait to come here. It's, it's, it's snowing, it's very cold, it's raining, the high school kids show up, they love it. Our, our elementary school kids love it as well. We have one day to sign up. If you miss the sign up, that's it, because we filled up that first day without a question. It's like first come, first served. Actually, we have to have a raffle to see who gets in, because we can only accommodate like twenty-five students. So, what they do, and, and what the high school students do, is, it's, it's fun, and at, at the end of the year, I mean, the parents want, they want their kids in here, we get so many more kids that apply on that first day because they're waiting, you know, to apply. It's, it's, it's neat. We don't have anything else where the kids come down from high school except our co-op situations, and, uh, we have pretty many this year. We have like four students that are involved, like two right now, and two more that want to be involved in cooperating, working with teachers. So, that's, as far as that goes. And, and in the observations, we kind of streamlined some of the things in there. I know I streamlined some things, maybe I was doing some things that I didn't need to do, that was making it more cumbersome. So, I've streamlined that process, for me, it's much more doable right now.
Real quickly, during our budget meeting the other day, Patrick and, and Dr. Phillips and I were talking about that process and possibly evaluating in the future, so...
Good to hear, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I just have one question. So, at the last board meeting, we had approved a request for bids for the chiller plant and piping work on your, uh, school building, which we've heard a lot about over the last year, with having issues of temperature control. I just want to make sure we're fixing the right problem here. So, so with the decision that we made, I'm going to assume that by the start of the school year in September, we should be done with addressing those issues of classroom temperature? Because we have, I think there are two separate items there. There's a chiller acquisition, which I think we had to put in early because of what it takes to construct it, but when I was going through some of my notes from previous meetings, there was an issue around the temperature controls in the classrooms. So, I'm just wondering if we're, you know, I would like us to know that at a September board meeting, you're not standing before us and telling us that you're having the same problems.
It's a two-year plan. The, this summer, the chillers will be done, it will be brought inside to eliminate the issue for the pipes that burst last summer. The vents will, in the classrooms, will all be fixed next summer. So, it's a two-year program.
What issues in with the classroom problem? I mean, that's okay, we have a two-year plan.
Yes, yeah, it's, it's, yes.
Hopefully... We just shouldn't expect that it's going to be solved this year?
No.
Okay.
Sure, Mr. President. Yeah, when the, uh, when the design phase came for the HVAC upgrades at Jackson Wall, obviously KCBA did the best they could with their initial inspections, but as, as that program developed, I expressed concerns that had an angle saying, you know, with the, the replacement of the major equipment is not going to solve all the problems over there, and they took that into account. I gave them all my HVAC related work orders from Jackson Wall, so they could take that information and see where the problem areas were. So, they did identify that, in the original plan, they had a three-year phased-out program of replacing individual unit vents in the classrooms. They obviously saw after the information we provided to them that that needed to be pushed up in the process. Now, and I can even, I can...
Excuse me, just, I don't understand. So, the venting was, like, instead of three years, they wanted to move it up into the second year?
Yes, yes, and, uh, there's a reason, which I won't go into the technicalities because I don't even understand all of them, but in order to properly replace the unit vents so that they improve the air quality and provide humidity control and things that we don't have with the current system, they need to put the heart in place first, they need to do the chiller and the, and the boiler, and then, once they can do that, because it's going to require different venting, I believe the, the plan for the new unit vents is, is that they're going to get their fresh air intake from a central system instead of per unit, which causes problems a lot of the times with, with the unit calling in and bringing fresh air in from outside, cold air, basically. So, it would be improvement on that system, or run more efficiently, humidity control and this, but in order to get to that stage, we have to do the, the central heart first.
Good?
I'll do it. Anybody else have any questions?
I'm with it, yes, good.
Thank you, sir.
I tried to be brief, I tried to...
I just wanted to thank Dr. Schlosser, as well as all the principals who hosted the, um, the board and the central office representatives at the faculty forum that we had at, at all the schools. You know, we continue to feel that there's benefit, you know, it varies in terms of faculty attendance to some degree, but, you know, it's, I think it's in some ways symbolic of our effort to try to remain open, to try to, to, to be, you know, thoughtful in terms of, you know, how we interact with staff, and, and try to, as much as possible, kind of show, show our, our staff members that we are there to listen and learn from them. So, thanks for all of you. Our next discussion item is Mrs. Guydish, and we're going to be, you talk a little bit about the installment payment of real estate taxes.
You want me to take it?
You want it?
Okay, so, um...
What happened is, at the, the last business committee meeting, we heard from both of the tax collectors, and the tax collector from St. Lawrence, Susan Edgar, asked if it was a possibility that we could take the tax payment system from three up to four, because she had a number of people, I believe the number was twenty-eight, who asked to have a, a little more time to pay their taxes without getting a penalty thrown on. Now, since everybody seemed to think that, that that couldn't be done, the, the penalty portion, can we find a way to give these people extra time to pay their taxes? Ultimately, is what the question was.
All right. And currently, for the rest of the board, the installments are due July 31st, September 15th, and October 31st, and I believe of the twenty-nine and twenty-nine in St. Lawrence, you're right, some of them have requested more time, and Charlie Diamond, the tax collector of Exeter, indicated that making it four would cause a lot more work, but I had a conversation with him this past Friday, and we were together, he actually called one of his fellow tax collectors from Wollenberg School District and said, "They have their final installment in November." Um, Charlie, would you be okay with three?
Four.
Three, changing it from October to November?
Okay, so that's not four, or that's just...
That's not four.
Moving the three, but the next one back?
Right, so, so that was, that was the secondary that Sue asked me about.
Right.
Was if we could change that third one to give them more time if we can't go to four.
Right, and I spoke with Susan today, and she, um, said that that would help them, giving them another month to, uh, make their final payment would be, would be helpful to them. Just to give you some perspective, twenty-nine installment payers in St. Lawrence, it's about sixty-eight thousand dollars, uh, and in Exeter Township, it was about three hundred fifty, uh, that's about one point two eight million. So, and our resolution that was adopted back in two thousand twelve, it also allows businesses to opt for installments, but our numbers for installment, people who choose that option are, are consistent. Um, I don't see that we, we've got to, you know, get into an issue where more would opt for installment, most of our taxpayers pay in a discount period. So, I would have to consult with our solicitor to make changes to the resolution, if the board would want to move ahead, you know, I haven't had a chance to talk to them about this, but it's my understanding that the board can, uh, change their mind about the installment payments, but within the, the law. Again, Wollenberg does something similar, so, I'm going to have to talk with Susan Stevens to make sure that they're good and, and bring it back. I mean, it would have to be done before June, um, probably maybe within a month if you want to add.
Okay.
And do you have, do you have any concerns about cash flow at all? It doesn't sound like there should be, but I think it's worth asking.
No, I don't, and again, if, if something, uh, would change, or the number would change drastically, which I doubt, you know, it could be a one-year thing, it could always change back, but I, the numbers have been consistent, um, year on, three year. This really just, you know, these people at St. Lawrence who have asked for a couple of years now.
Mm-hmm.
Would make it easier for them.
So, Ian, how, about what percentage of our taxpayers pay for their taxes by, is it August 31st?
Uh, you know, in the high...
When you get to get the two percent discount? I'm sorry?
In the high eighty percent, close to, you know, probably eighty-eight percent to ninety percent.
Here in Exeter?
Right, and then obviously, you have a lot of mortgage companies that escrow, and that's a good part of it, but the majority do pay in the discount period.
Sometimes it...
Do we want to advance it?
Does anyone have any concerns about moving this forward to the agenda for a, a vote?
I think we can just do it on a temporary basis and see what it yields for us versus, you know, making a wholesale change, let's see what it looks like in year one, if a thousand weeks go back.
Yeah.
We, we typically meet with them annually, don't we, with the...
We do.
The tax collectors, so that would be an opportunity for us to kind of review and, and reconsider.
So, are we okay with the payers on May?
So, we'll go to the solicitor, get the resolution redone, and come back on, on May, before it chooses.
Excellent.
The proposal, just to be clear, is moving the final month of collections from October to November, right? That's what we're moving forward with?
At the end of, at the end of November, I believe?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Anything more with that, or all done with it?
It's good. It's okay, when they do that, they do, they do not get a discount, they, they pay the, the regular, they, they pay the regular rate without the discount, without the two percent.
Okay. Good, we'll move on to our next section, which is public comments. Any members of the audience invited to make comments to the board on any topics on the agenda or for the good of the district? Seeing none, we'll move on to the rest of the agenda, which we have two sets of minutes that we'll be considering for approval next Tuesday. So, if anyone has any, in the meantime, has any, any comments or concerns in the upcoming weeks, you know, let us know, so we can modify those if necessary. Item six is board policies. We have some areas here that I know we've had, some, some folks have expressed some questions or concerns, so I want to get into that a little bit. Policy two oh one is admission of students, and this was actually a policy that we had held off on a little bit and had some additional discussion about, particularly the early admission to kindergarten, early admission to first grade, and thank you for, you know, making some of those changes, Sue, and the only thing I would say is that, let's just make sure that we include those administrative regulations in that policy, you know, when it gets posted, uh, once it's approved. Yeah, we're, we'll put them on there once it's passed. Once it's passed, okay, great. I mean, are they ready to go? They're complete.
Have you ever gone there?
Oh, great, okay. And, and, you know, again, you know, for the benefit of the board, I mean, these administrative regulations are not subject to board approval, but we certainly like to know what they include, and in this particular case, you know, the issue really has to do with a sort of real clear understanding of, of the criteria for early admission to first grade and kindergarten, making sure that parents are aware of that, those that have interests in, in, in being considered. Any other discussions on policy two oh one?
Back to the, is it, as I'm becoming more experienced in these last few months with the, excuse me, reading policies and, and understanding them, is it necessary for us to see those administrative regulations before approving policy, even though we're not making changes to them, but it's part of the policy? So, I'm having, I'm having a, you know, a little bit of a moral issue with approving a policy that I don't know what the rest of the administrative regulations stand.
That will create more problems, because we probably have fifty percent of these policies that require administrative regulations as a, as a part of it. They, they basically, you know, add flesh to the bones. They, they provide further detail and information in regard to how particular policies are going to be implemented from, implemented from an administrative point of view. So, you know, the general guidance is provided by the policy, but the administrative regulations provide the detail. But I, I hear what you're saying, but it, it, it's often not practical. In this particular case, though, if we have it available, I think it is, you know, we do have, we're within the timeframe, they've already been established, so they can be distributed to the board, you know, before the voting meeting Tuesday, so you can see them.
Okay.
So, if, if you don't mind sending those out to the, to the board so that they can see that as well. Again, not for a vote, but, and not for your comment necessarily, but just for your clarification.
Just as a question, when we're writing the administrative regulations, is that an immediate response to a policy passing, or are they almost written congruently when we're going through the process of drafting a policy? It depends.
Yeah, I would say ideally, it's nice to have it as soon as possible after the passing, but it, realistically, it takes time, you know, and, you know, one of the things that Dr. Phillips has said is that, you know, we have some time and breaks in the schedule, and I, and this, I think you mentioned the summer might be a good time for administrators to really, to dig into the, the regulations portion, but if you actually do a search on these policies, you'll see many, many policies.
Yeah.
Now, we do have a PSBA service for administrative regulations, so that should make the process go a little bit faster.
And we have those as well, so we're referencing them as we go through, and, again, as we've said through the policies, they've invented already as administrative regs. We just need to put our spin on them, so the administration have been looking at them, and we're playing along.
Okay, so it, it varies depending on the policy?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, some policies do not require administrative reg.
No, 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 it varies on the policy, isn't, sometimes you'll write them with the policy, sometimes you'll write them afterwards, and sometimes...
Some, sometimes it's just, it's just, like, almost, I want to say rubber stamp, but the administrative regs fit for the policy.
Okay.
Other times, we need to do our own spin on it, so the administration has to collaborate.
Okay, yeah, I, I think even more so than the policy, the administrative regulations are subject to modification at the local level. Policies tend to be more driven by, as we've talked about, you know, legislation, school code, existing statute, and, you know, in this particular case, I mean, with administrative regulations, it can be customized to whatever the school district does, and it could vary from district to district. The other policies that now are up for second reading, the weapons policy, I didn't hear any comments or questions about that, so that's up for, um, that's up for approval. Terroristic threats, there was some effort to kind of align the PSBA numbering system, so that was incorporated into that, and there was some language deleted from that existing policy, but I didn't hear any comments on terroristic threats. I just, related to that, in that policy, it references a... so that's up for, um, that's up for, uh, approval. Um, terroristic threats. There was some effort to kind of align, um, the PSBA numbering system, so that was incorporated into that. And, um, there was some language deleted from that existing policy, but, uh, I didn't hear any comments on terroristic threats.
I just, uh, related to that, yeah, in that policy, it references a memorandum of understanding with the Exeter Township Police Department. Do we know how often we, uh, review and execute on that policy or that memorandum?
Well, that should be done annually.
I'd say that's an annual, plus we have a new policy now, so we have to redress it anyway.
Okay. Yeah, and, and you'll see that reference to that memorandum of understanding in several of the policies, uh, particularly the ones that have to do with, you know, any of, any of the issues of weapons threats. Um, it could even be, um, tobacco, um, searches. They all, they all may have a reference to that memorandum of understanding. And it pretty much indicates, you know, that, that memo pretty much indicates that anytime there is a significant violation, that one of our primary responsibilities is to immediately reach out to local law enforcement to let them know, you know, what's happening and, and to see whether or not they would have jurisdiction in a particular case.
Do we have a similar memorandum of understanding with the Central Berks Police Department, specifically through the administration building?
I don't, I don't believe that's, the administration building. Administration, I said that? We don't, I don't believe the administration building is covered under the MOU for the policy because we don't have students, per se. We do have students over there, that's probably something we should look at.
That's a good question.
Yeah, that's probably something we should look at because of the, um, or do, do they have the MOU as the school, as the school entity?
No, they're current here, we have to follow them up.
All right, so. I know, I understand that, but as the school entity, since they sort of contract from us, are they the holder of the MOU? True, so then we, we should, we should look into that, that's a good point. We should look into an understanding with, with, uh, Central Berks as well.
Um, so weapons, terroristic threats, student complete process. Didn't really hear from any, anyone in terms of any concerns about that. Dressing, grooming, um, moving on to tobacco, uh, two twenty-two. Uh, what's about the first reading? Yeah, it's first reading, oh, I'm sorry, that's supposed to be first reading.
Yeah, it has to be moved to first reading because it's going to be substantive change we have to add.
We'll, we'll move that to first reading. One of the things about that was that our current policy refers, and I had, had spoken to Bill Kane about this, uh, today, and, uh, kind of brought this up as, as I was kind of making a final read of this. Electronic cigarettes are included in our current, um, policy, two twenty-two, uh, it's being prohibited. And it's very detailed, um, and very specific language related to that. That was completely eliminated in the, um, in the draft policy, uh, which in a sense would have probably opened the door to whether or not that was, that, that would actually be a violation of our tobacco policy, uh, without being explicit. But I looked at the notes from PSBA, they had eliminated it because they felt that it was understood that, that, um, that e-cigarettes are, are, are a tobacco product, which they're really not. Um, so, um, the suggestion was, and I, I totally agree, and Bill, I, you're welcome to comment on this because we had that conversation today. Um, you know, the e-cigarettes, I believe, should be kept in the policy. And we should, we should take the language of the prior policy and move it into the, uh, the revised policy. What do you, what are your thoughts, Bill?
One of the concerns, uh, Mr. Dean, this is where someone and I were talking about this, after, uh, Doctor Hamburg and I communicated media a few times today. One of the concerns is that we have a lot of parents who are basically armchair lawyers. If it's not explicitly stated, they're going to argue, well, no, the policy does prohibit it, vape, for example. Um, and there are, there are differences between cigarettes under Pennsylvania law and vape. Pennsylvania law prohibits, you know, the use of cigarettes in public place. It does not prohibit the use of vape, vape pens and, and, you know, various things. So, there, there's a legal distinction between the two, so, you know, so we can't, I, I don't think we can say to you similar, whatever we think about tobacco also covers the vape devices, that we should be specific, as we were in the current, in the existing policy.
So, you're recommending adding in your language?
Yes, yes, very, very.
Does that, does that include, you're saying e-cigarettes are, and, correct me, e-cigarettes the same thing as vapes? And I know, um, Jules and all of those new devices that are becoming issues. I mean, will that, are e-cigarettes the umbrella of those? Is that enough language or do we need to spell each one out?
The, the language that's in the current policy, not, not one being proposed, but the existing one is very comprehensive.
Okay.
It covers all the possibilities.
So, Juul is a vape?
It is.
So, that's covered.
Which is just a form of a new cigarette.
Okay, and that's a form of a new cigarette.
Now, I guess, Bill, my only question too is while you're, while you're up here. Um, there are punitive consequences for tobacco a, and as part of statute. Um, but I'm, I'm wondering whether or not the punitive financial consequences would also relate to vape as well or, or is, would that be a separate consequence, let's say?
That's a good question. Those, those financial consequences are based on the, the ability to cite the law. And probably something we should talk to the, uh, district manager about to get, to get a little on that.
Yeah, or maybe our, our legal counsel could give us an opinion on that, so. This is going to go back to first reading, so we have another month before we even reconsider it again, so. Uh, we'll make the, the modifications to it for this time, but we'll see also if we can get an update on, on that aspect of it with, uh, you know, with, uh, the punitive aspect and the fine for, for use.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so that was, uh, two twenty-two, and that'll move back to first reading for next week. Uh, eight oh five is emergency preparedness, I have no concerns about that.
Um, I'd just like to mention two things on that.
Yeah.
Um, the plan itself doesn't reference Berks Emergency Management, and I think that we probably should at least make sure that whatever plan that we're putting in place, the way this stuff typically unfolds with an EP situation, is it rolls from local to county and state and federal. And we should be in touch with Brian Gotchaw at, um, Berks Emergency Management as part of that process. That's number one, number two.
So, you're, are you looking under authority, or the language of authority here, Mike?
Whatever, whatever PMA's indicated, we should have BEMA in there as well.
It's called BEMA?
Berks Emergency Management, Department of Emergency Services, DES. Contact is Brian Gotchaw. The other thing is, since it's in here, I'll ask the question, how are we on the date of April tenth with our, um, uh, drills that we're supposed to have? It's like they're all supposed to be conducted by April tenth. Do we know if we did that?
Well, that's in this proposed policy, so I don't know whether it's in the old policy or not.
This is a new policy. So, the April tenth is a new date? The, the, I don't believe in that it was even a date from the old policy. This is a new policy, so yes, it would have to be a, a new date. But I would believe principles, we've been doing the monthly reports for the, all the different, our drills and so forth, the trainings that we've been doing.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm glad, um, you should be noted, we did have the Berks Emergency Management System, uh, team here for our land schools, um, state schools. We need to establish them, they were wonderful, the help is, we're, we're being thanked.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say, Mike, that that, that April tenth date is not an arbitrary day. That was, that's established in school code, uh, school code.
No, I'm, I'm fine with it, I just wanted to know if we actually had done what is written in school code, today's April tenth, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, of course. Uh, the other thing, uh, if you look in that policy, uh, there are some discretionary, um, uh, opt, there are some options at the very bottom of the policy that talk about continuity of student learning and core operations during, uh, times of when, um, district may be shut down for emergency purposes, they talk about. Um, we may, um, it said, "The district shall make provisions in the emergency preparedness plan for the continuity of student learning during school closings and excessive absences. Such alternatives may include web-based district instruction, telephone trees, mailed, uh, lessons and assignments, and instruction via local television or radio stations." Um, you know, the way this is designed is that districts have the option to select one or all or none of those provisions. And, you know, do we, honestly, we will go?
We are currently looking into the virtual programs, so web-based?
So, I mean, should we eliminate two, three, and four in this thing and then just stick, stick with the web-based, uh, direct instruction?
Well, I, I mean, eliminating options, I think we can always leave ourselves open, but I think the one we're looking at right now is the, the virtual option. We, we had started a conversation at the, uh, intermediate unit with some other districts, we're looking into that option.
Okay.
As the primary.
Yeah, Annie, I think they, you know, the important word is May, so if we do keep those in there, I mean, that's.
Another option.
Okay, so we'll keep those in there even though?
Yeah, but just so the board knows, it's the virtual option that we're looking at, the flexible instruction.
Okay. Um, any, any other comments about, uh?
I was just, under delegation of responsibility, um, superintendent or designated shall implement a communication system to notify parents slash guardians of the evacuation of students and to alert the entire school community when necessary. In the event, say, like, you know, what happened in February, um, it wasn't our school, but does this include also sending out notification or communication, um, in a timely manner to say, you know, um, I, you know, we're aware of what's going on and, and our school is safe and we're taking, you know, we have this emergency plan in place or that's not part of this policy?
No, I, I, you're right, Parkland.
Yes.
Yeah, we, we, that would be, that'd be something that we would immediately respond to, but we did send things out after that, starting the process, yes.
So, that's, that's not a policy, that was just kind of, you know, feeling of?
More of our administrative regulations.
Okay, that, okay, all right, thanks.
Any other comments on this policy? Okay, uh, the next policy that we probably want to talk a little bit about is the use of motor vehicles. And I know there was some language in the proposed policy that had a limit, or that had, um, um, restricted the use of, uh, motorcycles, skateboards, and, uh, mini bikes or scooters, I think, or something like that. Yeah, so, um, you know, I, I know we had, I know there was some concern expressed, and I think you mentioned that, um, this may have been a, uh, a, a provision in, you know, with our insurance. Uh, or may, or maybe that's what PSBA said, maybe something was popular to, to eliminate because of insurance liability issues.
Well, back in two thousand and eleven, twelve, our worker, uh, comp carrier recommended for a policy to eight fifteen.
Eight ten point five.
Thank you.
Yes.
Uh, that, uh, we have a, we not allow employees to use their motorcycle when they're conducting a business during the day, a school business. And that really is for reasons of safety because, um, they are hard to see, uh, they're hard to maneuver in bad weather. So, that was a worker comp, but then my comment, when Doctor Miller asked me about how I, what I knew, was that I suspected that this policy, PSBA, included that now for those same reasons, for liability, because from a perspective that, um, you know, it can be dangerous, a child on a skateboard, uh, when, when you have a lot of buses, you know, dismissal and, uh, and those bikes, motorbikes or scooters being di- difficult to see. So, I was just offering my, uh, feedback based on what our worker comp, uh, suggested.
And, and I did the same thing, that's how I know the policy number I have written down, I did memorize it. And, you know, I was trying to search why that was the language as well, or why they were putting that in. And, um, motorcycle usage for employees does state exactly like you said, that, um, s- those smaller modes of transportation are hard to see. Um, and, and therefore could be dangerous with the bigger transportation. So, um, again, I, I saw your email and kind of said, yeah, that's what I got too.
Has a clarification, is it a requirement under our current worker compensation plan that we prohibit the use of motorcycles by our faculty and staff? Or is that a recommendation for whatever reason?
Policy that they can't use it during the work day?
Yeah, but is, but is that a requirement of our worker compensation plan?
It was strong, we recommend, strong.
Does that affect our rate if we?
Well, one thing is this is.
Yes, it would, if an accident would occur, you know, uh, we've had a couple of employees who can use their motorcycle to go to the hardware store or, and, you know, it's dangerous. And they, uh, we were trying to get our, uh, claims under control, so it was just very strong recommendation.
Yeah, could I just say that that, this is outside of the scope of this policy?
Well, and, and the reason I ask that is because I think along with what this has done to alarm, I think, several board members, I think eight ten point five is also, in my opinion, a little bit ridiculous, um, personally. Now, I'm curious to hear those answers, and part of my recommendation, uh, from saying that this provision should be struck was revisiting eight ten point five, because I think that too, in line with this, in my opinion, just isn't appropriate.
All right. Um, I was trying to come up with the correct word to describe how I felt about this, um, and I think ridiculous is a wonderful word. Um, it says right in here that, um, it's, you know, that motor vehicle or motorcycles, um, are difficult to handle. I ride a motorcycle, I don't find it difficult to handle. Um, it says especially in bad weather. Name a vehicle that's not difficult to handle in bad weather, especially if you're not a good driver. Um, I think it's discriminatory to say that they can't, that you can ride your motorcycle to work, but you can't ride it during lunchtime or to go and get something. And I think that it's silly not to allow them on the property. Um, I feel that, um, when I asked everyone on the board, you know, what's the definition of a minibike? And no one responded back to me. Um, a minibike is something completely different than motorcycle. A motorcycle requires that you take a class, um, it requires that you have it insured, you have it registered, just like a car. You're doing everything else according to the law to be able to ride that bike that you would to drive a car. Um, you know, going back to the weather, I don't know of any parent that's going to let their child ride a motorcycle if it's snowing. So, that kind of takes care of that issue right there. Um, if we're concerned about parking and, uh, leaving when things are congested, then why don't we designate a space where they can safely park their motorcycle so they can safely get to school and safely leave without being stuck in that congestion? And then you don't have to worry again about other cars possibly hitting them, you know, don't have them parked with everyone else. Um, yeah, I just, I, I don't like this at all. I think that there should be no reason why you can't have a motorcycle on the premises. I, as a child, was picked up happily from Jacksonlode Elementary School on a motorcycle, and nothing ever happened to me, still here.
Doctor, what do you have to comment?
Yeah, just so you know, you asked me to reach out to PSBA to ask them about this. Um, PSBA said it was similarly what Ann said, it's just a liability piece, but it's all purely the board's decision. It's a recommendation, but it's purely, the board can take out one of them, they can take out the whole thing. It's purely up to the board for what they want to do.
So, it was just a suggestion?
It's just a suggestion because of liability.
And it wasn't in our prior policy?
It was not in our prior policy.
This would, this would be a change for us. And I wonder if we were to do that, um, I'm wondering from the secondary folks, you know, uh, who have, maybe have kids who are currently driving, riding vehicles, uh, such as these to school. Do we have this situation that's happening right now? I, other than Mr. Chapina, is there anybody that rides of those kind of vehicles to school?
Need students?
Students, yeah.
Do you find, Mr. Kane, do you find you have any problems with motorcycles, minibikes, scooters or skateboards?
Uh, no, I, we've had, we had problems with, I don't know if they're called, we would call them minibikes, but, uh, motorized bicycles.
Okay.
Where students have put, you know, engines running themselves. Police had some issues with that, and they actually have to be licensed and insured, just like motorcycles.
So, they have to have a license plate? So, if it doesn't, that's, that's a different, that's a police issue, right?
But fact of the matter, we have those students who drive motorcycles to school.
Have, have we ever?
Not in my company.
Really? Hmm.
Well, and I think, I think in the policy, it states that it's the parents' responsibility. And, and if I remember correctly, it takes the way the district having liability, um, correct? Um.
Inappropriate. Probably inadmissible.
It said?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's under purpose, the very first statement, it says, "An assumption of responsibility by parents and guardians and students."
Right, so, yeah.
For safety to and from school.
Students, um, students as an assumption of responsibility by parents, guardians and students, yeah. So, is that, is, you know, the word assumptions not a good word to have in there? But going back to legality, you know, can we?
I would, I would think we'd want to stick to the, the big issue really, because, um, you know, do we want to include a prohibition of skateboards, minibikes and motorcycles on school property? And I, I'm getting a sense from the board here that, you know, we'd like to keep the policy maybe where, where it was.
So, it says the board shall not be responsible for motor vehicles that are lost, stolen, damaged, and then bowled, or for injuries arising from their use.
Hmm.
So, does that take away the liability?
I mean, I, I, my only assumption is that, that it's the insurance industry's concern that. I mean, I, I, my only assumption is that, that it's the insurance industry's concern that somebody would be more inclined to be hurt on a minibus, skateboard, or motorcycle than in a car, and that's why this, hence the suggestion, but, uh, I don't think that necessarily increases our, does that increase our liability in any way? When we assume that parents are responsible, guardians are responsible for student travel back and forth to school, as long as they're using a, you know, properly licensed, uh, and registered vehicle, I, I don't see the, I don't see-
And it does say that they have to have, um, they have to be granted permission by the building principal to drive, to drive period on school grounds. So whether it's a car, you know, they need a parking permit, correct?
Yeah.
Well, we wouldn't discriminate, uh, that's correct.
Correct, but I'm just saying, we would have, we would know, you know, we would know.
Mm-hmm.
And, and under liability matters, why would it be any different for skateboards, minibikes, and bicycle, and, uh,
skate-
motorcycles, as opposed to a bike? What differences there between a bicycle and then these other three things, it's just that more people tend to use them, and I think that that's really an example where this is purposely looking at these things as different than all the others, when really they're not. You have to have a license to drive two of them, and kids bring, uh, skateboards in their backpacks or in some other bag all the time, so that they can hang out with their friends after school.
Yeah, the one thing that surprised me are that, that skateboards are considered a motor vehicle.
Because they can't park the skateboard, you know, your parking permit, right?
Yeah.
I, I still think we need to look more into the definition of minibike, because my understanding is that that is not a licensed, registered, insured vehicle. And so therefore I see a problem with that.
Well, and-
And, and if I could add to that, uh, Michelle, it's a good point, uh, as I was reading through, uh, you know, I had emailed Dave and, um, you know, I know, my, my son who has a dirt bike was riding in a neighborhood and, you know, got called out by a neighbor, not the police, and my understanding is that dirt bikes, to ride them in residential areas have to be street legal, um, which includes the, the license plate, the headlight, the, you know, those kinds of things, and so whereas it's understood that if you're gonna ride, uh, drive a motorcycle, that those things are in place, you know, if we put the minibike piece in, we may want to add a phrase, you know, phrase along the lines of that it be street legal, or define what, you know, parameters it would need to have if we're going to allow children to drive them to school, so, you know, to, to your point.
I agree, because some dirt bikes you can ride on the street and some you can't, there, there's different types of tires for that, and then the other thing is, um, like scooters, depending on what S I C C it is, you need a license and some you don't. Um, and then the other thing with skateboards is, I'm just curious, but, but you're saying, we're saying that skateboards was never in here, because I just happened to notice at a Watten Creek the other day, there was a sign that says skateboards prohibited, at a Watten Creek, so if they were never prohibited, there's a sign that says they are prohibited on that property. So I don't know, were they prohibited before?
Well, I, I kinda think that some of those signs are put up because of just, sometimes they're used destructively, you know, they can, they can damage, you know, when used improperly. They can damage them when kids are there unsupervised, you know, they, they may use it in, in ways that have an impact. But, I mean, to, as, as we talked about, the, the, the elimination of skateboards from all property doesn't make any sense, but if it's posted as no skateboards, then there's a reason for that, and they should follow posting requirement, but it does, I don't know whether that necessarily is asked in our policy.
I think that the policy is kind of use of motor vehicles, I, I know, I definitely, regardless of the other, the, the line itself, I mean, I think the line itself needs to go amongst the other board members, but skateboards does not seem like it fits in that, uh, in that policy to begin with. And, I don't know where it would be, maybe modes of transportation, or something like that, but I could see skateboards becoming a little bit more of an issue, because you don't park them, you're not gonna get a parking permit, and you have to carry it around with you at school, or if there's a drop off, um, and then that can become a distraction during the, in the learning of partners.
And so, so, okay.
Mr. Kane, do you see, a lot of student, Mr. Kane, do a lot of students ride their skateboards to school? Do you, do you have that?
We have a few. They ride them to school and they pick them up and put them in their locker, they did, or sometimes, unless this is for a new office.
Right, because I, this morning I was driving down Thirteen Street, near the school, and there was a student weaving and riding a skateboard, and there were buses and a lot of cars, it looked very dangerous to me, and I was really, you know, being very cautious, because he was kinda, you know, just flying along on the skateboard, and so that just reminded me that it, you know, I think it is dangerous, and then I guess before you, this was Thirteen Street, you had a high school.
So then from what Michelle said, about there being signs at a Watten Creek, but they're clearly not at the high school?
There's some here though, right?
Some is on-
Does that make it contradictory, should it be across the board? Or is that a building level decision?
Well, I mean, a- as I said before, we've got a lot of properties, and, you know, I think, you know, if it's posted at a building site, it's posted primarily just to kind of, for instance, if somebody brought a skateboard into a, an area that was not necessarily directly attached to, uh, the school building, let's say, or an area that's posted, then I think it would be acceptable.
I can say what's going on right now is, is what they're doing, especially out back, I can see them in my office, and I have to go out and say, guys, you can't be here, they're riding the skateboards up along the brick and just destroying the brick. And I don't know, I mean, to me, it's, it's scary, because if they fall, they're gonna break their neck too, but it's just, when they ride up and they kinda ride along the edges, they're tripping off in the bricks, so I'm assuming that's what the prohibition is for, that's why I'm opposed to that damage to the property.
But I don't, I don't think it necessarily has to be in this policy, is what I'm saying, in order for that to be enforced. If it's, if there's signage, and if it's visible and, and, uh, it's clear. So, um, I'm getting the sense that, how did you move this?
Yeah, obviously, since I, I'm not really for having, um, like, small motorized things like a bike or a scooter uh, in the, on the property, because I think that, um, with, with the big buses that we have, uh, sometimes, you know, when they're back, I mean, I, I've been there where the, the buses are coming out and coming in, and, and they're fast and furious, because they gotta, they gotta make things, uh, on time, and, you know, I, and I, I fear it's a liability for the district, um, you know, if something would happen, um, you know, and who could say whose fault it was, and, um, you know, we could be on the hook for, you know, a big lawsuit if someone got killed, uh, just because they went back to school, or one rode a scooter to school, it was more of a, so I, I, I'm, I'm not before this policy.
So you, we have one person so far hearing from us, as far as I've heard.
I also wanted to say, and I put this out when this policy came up for review, um, I wondered if there was, and Dr. Miller, maybe you have any insight on this, um, any or, noise ordinance with this, um, the loudness that can potentially be, now, I'm not saying they're all like that, but potentially be in some motor, motorcycles, um, and would that be an obstruction of crossing guards, or bus drivers talking to their, their, their students, or something like that? That might, my only, I'm uncertain why that language would be in there.
I have no idea about the noise ordinance.
Is there a noise ordinance?
I have no idea.
It's not, I haven't, I haven't figured this out. We used to start up our race cars at my dad's business on four twenty-two and never got yelled at, it's okay, for, okay. Um, in regards to your comment, I would say that someone could be walking behind a bus, not on motorcycle, and get hit by a bus, so it could have a liability problem. And it goes back to, if we're going to allow motorcycles, which I strongly feel that we should, maybe we should have a safe place for them to park, that they're not near buses, and they're not near other cars that are leaving, um, especially at the junior high, if you have kids at that age that are driving, I don't know if there are, um, but I know that is a particularly, or for teachers, that, you know, that's a particularly, um, small area where I could see safety arising, and I would want them to have the right to be able to drive them if they would like to, but I'd like them to be safe.
Okay, um, so, I'm, again, trying to get a sen- a sense of, you know, of support for eliminating this portion of the policy, uh, reflecting the prohibition of these, of these vehicles. Um, does anybody, other than Pat, have a concern about eliminating, or about, uh, removing that language?
Well, I would ask someone to look in, to talk to our insurance company concerning if we are going to allow these vehicles on, uh, on our property, you know, every day, in and out, that is it going to increase our, our cost of, uh, uh, to the, to the policy?
Saying now you don't have any problems, and I'm, I'm, you know, I'm advocating-
Our, I mean, our, our policy is, is silent on this right now, so we, and, and it seems that we, this hasn't been an issue, so
Okay, I mean, yeah.
This is, this is an issue because it's been reduced as new language, and that's the extent of the issue, I don't think. So I, I don't think it's a bad idea to check the insurance if you're willing to do that, and, and, and we'll also get this vetted again by our solicitor, just to make sure we're not overlooking anything, and then this will be on the agenda for first reading, um, Tuesday, which means we still have-
Removing the language or prohibition?
Yes, yeah, we're, we're moving the language, but it'll be for first reading, and in the meantime, we'll do some checking, and we'll have some clarification in terms of what this potential impact might be on our insurance, and from a legal perspective, if we have any concerns about potential liability.
I have a question, why would the, why would the amount change, because we currently allow them? So what's there to check, right? We currently allow motorcycles, so we're not changing anything.
We're gonna reduce it.
It might reduce it.
Mine, that's my comment.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think there's a reason why PSBA kinda included it, which was it is probably, um, maybe somewhat of an acceptable notion that it represents a risk, you know, but.
There'll be no cost asking?
Yeah, we can always ask.
Um- In, in, in light of Ann going back, um, to find out about that question, depending on the answer, could we consider relooking at eight ten point five? Because I think that that's also an issue.
We're gonna get to eight ten point five at some point, probably in two years, but, yeah, yeah. Okay, well, thanks, we'll move on if that's okay with everybody. Um, the other remaining policies, uh, care for school properties, um, searches. Um, any comments or concerns on any of those?
Absolutely, um-
Okay, Jerry.
On two twenty-six, which is searches, I, I'm not a fan of this language that says, uh, and I'm quoting it, during the time, uh, prohibiting any behavior or action during the time spent traveling to and from school, and to and from school-sponsored activities, that's really a big overreach into a person's personal freedom. And, and, I, I mean, I understand being able to, or being allowed to regulate what happens here, but you can't regulate what happens on the way to and from.
When they're, when they're in our buses, there are our students.
But it says person or vehicles is left.
On our property?
No, it says to and from school, be it in a exterior vehicle or not.
Yeah, I, can I just respond to that, because I, I believe, and I may, I could be wrong this word, you know, I think we may have to check with our solicitor, but uh, our responsibility starts from the time they leave their home to the time they come to school, regardless of how they choose to come to, to travel. So, we do have, um, a local parent's role when it comes to that period of time. The time they leave their doorstep to the time they go back into their home, we have, we have some level of responsibility there. So, I, I, I believe that's where it's applicable.
Okay, well, then, you have to go back to, you have to go back to the other policy, uh, concerning vehicles. When you, when you were saying parents assuming responsibility in the motor vehicles, then it falls under the same umbrella, does it not?
Well, I mean, I, I think if, if we assume responsibility, that means that we would take on their insurance, uh, and the insurance liability for their travel, which, you know, clearly we're not gonna do that. But I mean, in terms of their behavior and their comportment, and their safe, you know, passage from home and, from home to school, I think that's where the law, uh, extends our responsibility. Um, and, again, I'm speaking from, not, I'm not an attorney, so I can't say, but that's my, that's my understanding of our, our responsibility.
We'll get that in court.
But we, we should get that in court.
Okay, there was also, um, in two twenty-six.
That's, is that one search?
Two twenty-seven, yes, searches, yeah. The board authorizes the administration conduct searches of students who were their belongings, including lockers, automobiles, electronic devices, persons backpacks, clothing, and other possessions, based on, in but reasonable suspicion. Now, if you've got reasonable suspicion, sit on the kid, call the cops, get a warrant, and urge him then, but don't violate his rights. I mean, it's, it's just, it's wrong to violate a person's constitutional rights in that way.
If, if reasonable suspicion is the standard for school, for school districts, and I know we have a lesser standard, uh, than law enforcement that has a higher standard, you know, for a search. Um, I know that's true, so if we were to bring in law enforcement, they would need to have a warrant, present a warrant, or they would have to have, um, I, I would suppose probable cause, which is at a higher standard. It's pretty much common practice in, in, in schools. So I mean, it's like, you know, like, uh, the, the expectation of privacy for, for a locker, and even, even privacy for your, your car, um, it's not the same, you don't have the same rights as, as a public citizen might have, uh, because of the conditions under which they've been given the privilege to ride their car there, and the, and the privilege to use a locker that doesn't, that they don't own. So, those are, uh, prevailing arguments from the legal side of it, from my recollection.
And, uh, we, we have a lot of concerns about safety in the schools, and so sometimes it might become necessary to wanna keep the school safe and students safe. So sometimes searches are done for that reason, and, and so, you know.
Okay, well, I bring that up, because-
I think we need a lower level of being able to search.
Well, I bring it up, because it happened to my son when he was in, uh, twelfth grade. A, a teacher thought she smelled something on him, and they, they made him empty his pockets, they made him empty his bookbag, they went out and looked at his car, they found nothing, there was absolutely no reason for the search. Okay, I asked them point blank, my kid didn't do drugs, he walked by somebody, maybe the smell got on, but they used that to search him. And I didn't find about it, find out about it until afterwards, believe me, I wrote the new one to everybody involved. But, it's a, uh, it's a concern for me, that, that such a low level exists, and I, I get the current climate of fear that we're living in, and safety is important, but, I mean, people's rights have to mean something.
Um, I'm gonna be the devil's advocate, so back there, my kids are young yet, but if my child was in high school and the teacher thought and had good reason to think that my child was doing drugs, and I didn't think that, and they searched him and found something, I would be very proud, because now I know and I can help my child, so I could see in the moment that would be very, um, you know, upsetting to your son, and, and I'm sorry that that happened, and I'm glad that they found nothing, but for the child that they might find something, and the child that that might help, I think that it's well worth it, and the other kids that it, you know, may help in the, depending on what it is that they find.
But tha- that's more of the argument that's going on in the entire country, of the wireless, uh, or rather warrantless searches of, of, of computers, of, of cell phones, and I, I just, I, I, I couldn't disagree with that more either. Um, if you have reasonable suspicion that you think it's gonna go to that level, just go right to it, give it over with, but don't violate the person's rights.
Right, and I think our secondary principals deal with this, you know, these issues all the time, and, and so, this is a policy that they'll need to, to adhere to. Um, and, uh, I know, you know, they're very careful about not, uh, not exceeding the limits of, of, um, what is legally acceptable for searches. And it happens, I don't know how regularly, Bill and Jason, you, you guys deal with this all the time, but I'm not sure how frequently you have to do searches, maybe you can elaborate to some degree on what your history has been and what your practice is.
It is, it is fairly frequent, to be honest with you, uh, because it's the only way that we can work on the drug problem, that our school, just like every high school in the country has. Um, I think you really do need to consult legal counsel on this, because the courts have time and again upheld the reasonable suspicion for presence. And I think you really need, you know, rather than arguing in circles here this evening, probably consult legal counsel and get some definitive information.
Yeah, well, I, I don't think there's any, I mean, I don't think, I think Jerry's debating it, I think, from, um, his particular perspective, you know, uh-
I don't wanna spend money on lawyers on this, no.
Right, I mean, and thi- these policies have already been vetted, um, uh, obviously by PSBA council, and, and, and will receive the attention of our attorney as well. So, if it, if it's in violation of any, any current law, case law, statute, we'll, we'll find out.
Well, I would say that Plessy versus Ferguson was vetted really well too. They don't always get it right.
Okay. Um, any other comments about searches? Um, any other comments about searches?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Yep.
I, I thought I read in the paper that the, um, Exeter Police Department has now gotten a K nine dog that can do, can do, uh, drug searches.
Sort of. They've had.
So I guess we could possibly then have, have that, uh, uh, the, the dogs come in and check to see if there are.
Um.
On a, on a, a building basis, yes, this policy is on a individual basis.
Oh, that's on an individual basis?
Yeah, they're not gonna come out for every time we have a student we want to search.
Oh, okay. But they could do, they could do a, 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 a search.
A, a search through the building. Mr. Kane, have we done that before where we've had the dog go through the building?
Yeah.
Yes, so that, that's something we can do. But this is not, this policy wouldn't allow us to call the dog out for every time we, we see a student we think is.
Yeah, no, that's, I, I, I was talking about just a, a search.
Yes, we, we do, we've currently done.
Okay, searches, okay. Okay, um, controlled substances, two twenty seven. Essentially our drug, uh, drug alcohol policy, um, student government and student fundraising. Those are the, all up for first read, yes.
Um, on student government and maybe Mr. Kane or, uh, Mr. Risselman or Mr. Dean might be better to answer this question. But do we currently have any bylaws, uh, constitution, policies that the student council has adopted that we'll re, need to re-adopt and, or reapprove if this were to be approved?
I, I would have to check with the student council.
Okay. I guess I also am curious to find out how often we really recognize the student council as the actual voice of the students when it comes to matters within the district. It certainly wasn't the case when I was there, I can remember because I ran on that platform. So I wonder, is there more that we can be doing to include the students, especially in light of this policy, if we're gonna recognize them as the formal voice? Is there more that we can do, and this is a general question that doesn't need to be answered tonight, but is there more that we can do to involve them in some of the decision making? Not so much that they get a vote at the table, but at least that they get a voice at the table.
I, I would just say some districts do, um, have a student representative sit at the board tables, you're saying, and offer their insights and input when requested, but don't vote. So it's not a, you know, it's, it's a recognized practice, uh, among some of the wards and maybe even be, we'd have to look at the triple zero section of our policy, it may be included there as an option for, um, for the district to, to do.
I just wanna say I support that decision one hundred percent. I think it'd be nice to have a student up here and hear their perspective, they're living these policies every day.
Could you do that a little bit?
Oh, I, I do think that's a good idea, I know, um, in Redding, they, they, I mean, I remember attending many board meetings in Redding school districts since I was employed there. And they do have a representative to, to the board from the student body. Of course, they didn't go in and tell a whole lot of things, but they kind of told us what was going on in the schools and, you know, gave us some insight, uh, you know, into, um, you know, the feel of what was going on with the students in the school. Do they still have it?
I think, I think it would also be an excellent opportunity to allow some students to feel encouraged because they're consulted in this process. I think we really saw some success when we were looking through the walkout and how we attended, uh, the student forum. Um, with them really feeling like they had a serious seat at the table. Uh, because I know it wasn't the same in every district. Uh, it really, in addition to that, I think it's also a unique opportunity to bring up a new generation that is very concerned and interested with what goes on in meetings like this. I remember many meetings that, and probably still most of them, where I am the youngest person in the room. Um, and I think it would be far more encouraging for the rest of us to see a lot more people very younger than I come here.
Okay, sounds good. So we'll, we'll look into that.
Thank you.
Okay, that's, uh, I think that's all for policy. Uh, we're going to move on to business functions, Mr. Phil.
Thank you. In, uh, next week's voting meeting, we will be voting on accepting the audits of both tax collectors, Exeter and St. Lawrence, as well as disposal of elementary student desks and chairs. The CISPRA agreements concerning the TIPS program, Teachers in the Parks, and, uh, budget transfers.
Is there anything on?
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, speaking of, um, TIPS in the pro, uh, TIPS in the parks, uh, what do you call?
Teachers in the parks.
Teachers in the parks, that's it, teachers in the parks. Um, do we have, are we going to be domain and then to the teachers in the parks as far as a, a monetary amount?
We have a contract, you know, that's almost, yeah, that's, that's the other one the agenda will do.
So, so is it the same as last year or more so?
That's exactly, I think it's exactly the same.
Same amount.
Yeah, same amount and same, same contract, same language.
Oh, okay.
That should function pretty much the same.
What is, what is the amount, the number now?
It's written in the.
Is it twenty five thousand?
Twenty five thousand, yeah, twenty five thousand. It's on the agenda.
Probably, yeah, it's twenty five two thousand.
I, I just had a question, uh, you know, about, um, the elementary student desks and chairs. And I, I just wondered if we could also maybe consider looking into the possibility of a auction service. I did speak with Wagner Auction Services today and they did some, they did similar, um, work for Hamburg and School Valley School Districts. And they would be receptive to coming in and looking at our inventory and seeing if they can give us a, a competitive, um, offer, you know, on, on the service of auction off material. And they would do it on site here, they wouldn't require taking it anywhere.
Right, I, after your first email and my reply to you, my reply basically is, um, under a lot of pressure to get this done, to get that gym cleaned out. Uh, but I did speak with Dick, what was his last name, I called him again. And he actually did return the call and, uh, he did, uh, an auction for Putz Town in two thousand fifteen. So he too is willing. But he also indicated, I did email, I'm sure you've got a chance to see that, you know, those types, types of auctions are effective when you have a variety of things. So, I mean, I can rework this language, but, uh, and then try to get him in, um, or, you know, to include both options. I'm really concerned about getting these desks and chairs out of the gym.
Yeah.
Because of the wrestling nets. But we have a lot of things out in the buildings that, um, and I could talk with Wagner as well, but it seems like who I talked to in Wagner are very similar, where they, they'll do it on site. Uh, and they could either do everything for you and they would take that bigger cut or, you know, we would organize parts, but, uh, I, I really don't wanna, um, obviously throw away things, so, if we aren't successful in getting rid of too many of those student desks and chairs by offering to the community, and I know there are families that pay for three dollars for a desk and chair, you know, they would really like that and what was ever left, going in and bundling into a full auction. And you don't, when I spoke with, said, um, I could take a look at what you have, he does have auction houses, it's not a lot, he would be able to move it out of here.
Do you have the two rooms downstairs that are filled with equipment? Yeah, we have a lot. Yeah, my only, and I, I'm fine with all those, I, my only concern is, is throwing into a landfill a lot of potentially useful.
Right.
And, and so, so we can avoid that at all costs, that would be my, my biggest priority.
Right, not reword, word add and take away, discard, um, if it's broken, obviously you discard, but we might be very tempted in doing what's in the best interest, um,
Okay.
getting it somewhere else. Other than.
Thank you. Is that all, um, Mr. Phil for?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay. So we'll move on to a personal committee with Mr. Japan.
We have four issues here, we have, uh, two retirements, uh, certificated staff Cheryl A. Strick from Jackson Mould, who's been here for, Jasmine's kindergarten teacher.
First grade.
First grade teacher. Pat Bender. We have appointments of sports staff as a, uh, part-time bus aide and a guest teacher. We have course requests. I'm a little laggy here to go. It's a little laggy. We need some high-speed internet in here.
Go fix the internet, Joe.
After you do the calendar. And staff conferences.
I did, I have one question, um, and, uh, Dr. Phillips, maybe you can, uh, put some insight into this in a staff conference. There is one for, um, an AP Studio Art portfolio course. As I understood this, this is the training to be able to teach an AP class, is that correct?
Correct.
So my concern here was that this is not a course that's been approved under the soaring eagle. And I wonder if we're putting ourselves up into a path dependency to almost approve that course before we've even gotten a chance to approve it.
It wasn't a sort of approval.
No, not from what I just reviewed, I reviewed for studio art, for honor studio art and then academic studio art.
Yeah, the, the AP art studio, AP art history is a sort of, that's right. AP art studio is one that they are planning to propose for next year's course.
Okay, um, so my concern is we're putting ourselves on a path dependency already here. Because we have not approved next year's course catalog and yet we're already paying for the conferences to enable the teacher to teach that class. If we're going to approve the course, that's okay. That's when they should be going to the staff conference, in my opinion. So I'm a little bit concerned with this one.
So my understanding is that there is a need for this course based on all the students that wanna take the AP course?
There's an interest in it.
There's an interest in it. If we were to wait for the soaring eagle to be approved next year, it would be an additional year for this testing, so we'd be talking two thousand twenty one. Correct, for it to start? Cause it'd be nineteen twenty for the soaring eagle and then the tech, the AP, um, course training would take place twenty twenty one.
Well, well, hopefully we can get the training in the summer.
True, but I think the question from, from Mr. Aaron's is he would rather have the course approved next year and then send the teacher to train, correct?
Yeah, it can be done.
So we'd be talking another two years.
No, if, if the course were approved, let's say next March, this, the teacher could, in, in.
Oh, I see what you're saying, is he trying to get it, if, is it typically offered every summer?
The teacher could still be, yes.
Okay, so then.
Get trained and then be ready to teach it for the.
That, that, that we can certainly, we can certainly table us if that's the wish of the board.
The only thing I would add to that conversation is that, um, AP trainings are, are not easy to find. And one of the reasons why the cost is a little bit higher is that for whatever reason, and I experienced this where I was previously, there aren't a lot of places in PA that do AP trainings. I don't know why that is. But Delaware is a common location, I've had to send teachers from the Midwest before. And so, and, you know, and I mean, I, I, it just, it would be unfortunate if, you know, let's say we wait, you know, we approve, we approve it and then let's say next summer the training is not available. I, I would hope that's not the case. Um, and, you know, we should, you know, I, I could probably look on the college board and see what that likelihood is, but that would be, that would be my only potential concern.
I, I agree that, sorry.
The, the other comment I'd like to add is being trained in the AP course is a difficult part of being able to write the curriculum for that course.
So my, I, I don't disagree that I wouldn't wanna force, uh, the cost to be higher because we have to send them somewhere else or that it would take more time in the summer to write the curriculum. My concern here is that this is a course that's going to require new textbooks to be bought, uh, new materials to be made available to the students who take this course. Uh, and we're setting ourselves up to already approve a course that we have not yet approved by sending somebody to go do the course so that they're able to teach it. I think that this is out of process. We don't know what next year is gonna look like. And setting ourselves up on this path dependency, I think is what we've done on several occasions where we vote for things after they've already occurred. And to me, I think that this is halfway down that road and I think, you know, and I, I don't, I don't wanna put, uh, the teacher in this case in the situation to hear back from the board, no, we're not doing this this year. Um, but I, I think that this is premature. And I would prefer to see this done next year with the soaring eagle. And if we wanna continue the conversation early to make sure that all the board is aware that this is gonna be something that we're gonna be voting on next year, I'm okay with that. Uh, but I think that this, uh, this is about the time for this, that's, that's my perspective.
Only other thing I would mention, Hunter, is that I, if we allow the teacher to get the training this summer, I think the only message that sends is, you know, we're investing in your desire to want to, you know, be able to teach, and teach AP art courses and offer them to the students. You know, once, once you're AP certified and you have that certification, you have the certification. Um, and so, I, I mean, I think it, you know, I think it sends a message that we, you know, value that, um, to the teacher. But I, I understand what you're saying process-wise, I mean, we could, I mean, we can do it either way. It just depends on, on what direction the board wants to go. Or, or how you wanna recommend it.
Yeah, my comment is, I mean, I, I don't, um, I don't have a problem with delaying it, but what resonated for me was the idea that maybe Bill brought it up, which is that by taking the course, it gives you preparation for writing curriculum, that, that would be imperative. You know, and, and if you were, if we were to wait for next summer, then it really wouldn't be maybe sufficient time to do the ordering and, uh, and, and, and everything associated with writing curriculum in preparation for the start of the school year. I mean, I don't know, I, I, I can see what you're saying, I'm just, I don't know whether this necessarily commits us to a path. We still have to approve, you know, this, we still have to approve the, the curriculum or the course. But I, I'm, I'm trying to be sensitive to the, to the need timing-wise to, for curriculum writing and development, so. I mean, do we keep this on the agenda and then we can go against it if they want to and then where it goes?
Well, I, I agree with Hunter on this one. I guess I'd need more information too, if this is not, of course, we're not offering, we're not, it's not being offered right now. In preparation and, and paying about fifteen hundred dollars for a teacher to get certified or, you know, get the AP certification, um, how many students are taking this course in AP Studio Art? I mean, it's definitely, it should be, you know, students should have that opportunity if, if it arises, but it seems like it's a very select course.
In, in addition to that, Mr. Kane, is there a reason why they didn't ask for this course to be added this year to the soaring eagle?
Yeah, cause they weren't ready.
Okay. Well, what was the, why did they ask for the staff request, uh, the staff conference this year then? Is there a reason that the timing didn't work out this year?
Yes, because they were putting in the new AP art history course this year. One AP course is difficult enough, they have it for first year, try and put in a second one.
Can that same teacher, who teaches, maybe it is the same teacher that is certified in the AP his, art history can teach also AP art studio? Say a different AP certification, I mean, obviously it's a different course, but.
It is a different AP certification.
It is different.
Yes.
Well, I know when you have an AP course, um, and you take it as a student, if you're going to be an art major, that isn't, that, um, is another feather in your hat, actually go to college. And, and it increases their, um, their, their, their status. So I think, um, Exeter has a great, uh, art program here. And there is no reason why we have to wait a year, uh, to get a teacher certified. Because if she is certified and she's teaching a course, um, who knows, she might, you know, she might give the kids a few, um, pointers who are running, you know, go on into college and are now seniors, so, you know, I, 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 I see no reason why we should not approve this course now.
Well, Pat, I think some of the soft benefits that you identified in, in understanding what coursework is gonna look like in college, uh, what the curriculum may look like and also just general tips about how to be successful as an art major are things that our, our teachers are already capable of doing. Uh, in addition to that, I also think, again, what it sounded like was that you're all ready to, ready to approve this course as something that's already set up for next year and, and we haven't gotten to that point. And I, I'm, I'm just uncomfortable in doing business in this process where we're putting, uh, the part before the shoe.
Shoe, of course.
So whatever. You know what I meant, you know what I meant.
Mr. Kane, do we, uh, do we know um, what level of interest there is in one person's premature decision as another one's strategic planning error? So is there some sense that there's a heightened interest and you anticipate
So is there some sense that there's a heightened interest and you anticipate that a number of kids are highly interested in the course offering?
I, I don't know the numbers right now. I could look at, we have a non-AP Studio Art course now, I could go back and see what the requests are for that for next year. Give you some indication, you know, that's the best indication I could think of at this point, because the students taking the art, the art studio would be the likely candidates for an AP Art Studio.
So my request would be that, be that this be real, but that's, that's the. I see both sides of it, and I really like the way Hunter's thinking here, to do things in a sequential manner, to make sure that you're not putting the cart before the shoe. So that you get things done right. You know, it, it makes perfect sense.
So what, how would they get things wrong, the way they're doing it now, if, if someone gets certified to be, be AP instructor?
If the course doesn't get approved.
Why wouldn't it get approved, what, you're not an instructor?
You have two kids that want to take it.
Well, you're speaking to his point. Just because we have an instructor, we have to have that course, what if some other course comes up? And, and let's, let's say our budget goes to hell next year. So the economy just goes boom.
It has nothing to do with, with the person being certified.
Sure it does.
Well, we already paid it, so you don't have to worry about next year's budget.
That's the point, the money can be used elsewhere.
Oh, come on.
There might be special ed, or there might be an additional classroom or a teacher that needs to be put in the budget.
Well, you know, a lot of people stay in school because they love art, just like a lot of people stay in school because they love music. You know, a lot of people stay in school because they love a certain subject. I'm sure there are many people here, kids that are in the art program, that are staying in school because they love art and, and they see it as a passion.
I, I certainly agree with that point, Pat, and I don't think any of us are suggesting that we want to take away from the art program. I think we're, we're really looking for the process behind this decision, and I, I totally agree with you. In fact, for me, you know, social studies was what really made me want to come to school, and I, I wouldn't want to take that away from somebody who's coming to school for art.
Yeah, but what about the, the students that struggle in school, the dropout, I mean, there's a balance between those, we need, we need.
I'm talking about people dropping out of school, right?
I know, but it's great to have a passion and come, and they are good at something, but if we need, I'm saying if, if next year we need to improve a course, or a teacher, or a program that's going to require funding, or from our budget, we might say, unfortunately, we're not going to be able to approve an AP Studio Art course because we need a remedial reading course for students that are struggling. That's what I'm saying.
Here's another item to consider as well, and I, I think we've gone too far into depth with this, but one thing that had caught my eye when I first looked at the soaring eagle, because I thought of this, but now that has caught my eye even more, is that we already have two courses for dual enrollment through Reading Area Community College for Fine Arts Studio, Art 111 and Art 121. So I'm curious about even the, the need, and, and I, I, I think that that would be better placed to have that discussion when the full course comes up for approval. Direct that at Mr. Kane? I did. Okay. I don't think it was worth it.
It sounds like it needs to go to a vote.
Well, not here.
Right, I mean, next week.
Yeah, next week, and one, and one thing I think we've been, just been conferring with Dr. Phillips, one thing that we would try to do maybe is to provide any additional insights and information to the board prior to the vote next Tuesday. Yeah, we can certainly get numbers, as Mr. Kane indicated, and we can also revisit the process and why there's a need to get this done prior, you know, hence the, the curriculum writing and so forth, bring that to the board.
I'll go on the AP College Board website and see if there are standard trainings that are offered every summer.
I appreciate that.
Understand likelihood, whether or not it'll be offered again.
So are, I'm sorry, are we going to bisect that out? As, as like a separate level?
Yes, yes, we'll make a.
We'll make a set.
And I just want to say that you mentioned the two art classes that are doing enrollment, that's very different than art portfolio.
You mean from the, from the AP course, or from the specific?
Yeah, they, this is, theirs is art, the portfolio, and you mentioned fine arts and something else for dual enrollment.
Yeah, so the fine arts.
But that, the art portfolio is a whole different course, and when students are applying for art school, they have, they submit portfolios.
And they have that course, it's just not AP now.
Yeah, and it's an honors course right now, too. So, so I understand what you're saying, my point was, if we're worrying about the cost of college associated with students, we already have two courses that satisfy that desire. So this, I think, has a higher burden to carry for why we would want to add this course, and I think that discussion hasn't occurred yet.
Just to clarify, for dual enrollment course, the parents have to pay the college tuition.
If a student wants to take an AP course, they have to pay for it, or take the test, if a student wants to take an AP test after their course and don't pay for the course, they don't pay for the test.
Eighty-four dollars for the test, three hundred dollars for the tuition.
Yep, that, that in a school district, when they, when they, when they evaluate the overall high score, that's, doesn't the more AP courses that they offer their students, isn't that a plus for the district? I think I might add somewhere.
It is part of the SPT calculation for high schools, yes, that's correct.
So I, I suggest that we, when we have students interested in AP courses, and there's enough of them, then I think we should go forward and not force around.
Okay, we're going to move on, we're moving on to the calendar, and we're going to move to item nine, student functions.
At the voting meeting next week, we're going to be reporting on the below field trips that are within a sixty mile radius. We're going to be voting on field trips that are beyond sixty mile radius, and we're going to be voting on the approval of the Act 80 Day.
I have one question.
Sure.
On the, the beyond sixty mile radius, number two, senior high yearbook staff traveling to Harrisburg April twenty-fifth. Is that not something that can be done virtually? Is that a must trap?
It cannot be done virtually, they work with the designers, they have workshops at them.
Like the cost on that is?
You mean the cost for the travel?
Sure.
Typically, typically costs for that are borne by the students who attend the trip.
Okay.
You said no cost to the students.
No cost to the students.
No, no, they'll need substitutes, it's on April twenty-fifth.
Again, that, that cost is worked in because of the trip to the students.
So the students are going, because this just says staff.
There's one staff member taking eight or nine students.
Oh, I see, okay.
Okay, two staff members, I'm sorry.
I'm going.
Yeah, that, that may need to be modified, because it just looks like it's senior high yearbook staff.
That's a staff member, yeah, that's what I thought.
And maybe should be students too.
Staff and students.
Yeah, just to clarify.
Um, as far as the Act 80 Day, um, I don't know if this is, this is where we discuss the calendar a little bit, or if that's in a different spot?
This will be the song.
Okay, I thought so. So I had the upcoming speaker with Dr. Phillips, a lot of my personal questions already answered, and, but, and if, when I read this, it said that we were approving an Act 80 Day for August twenty-third. And Dr. Phillips, am I correct that we need two Act 80 Days though, for our seniors?
We already have two Act 80 Days.
So this will be a third one?
This is the third one that will allow our students to not come in after August thirteenth.
It will allow our seniors to graduate on that Friday, not be in a penalty for attendance.
So this gives us three Act 80 Days?
Yes.
And this.
For the senior.
Can they go to the entire student body?
Again, when we, when we looked at this schedule, what we did was we looked at what was best for students, and waiving three days of instruction was not something we felt was best for students. Seniors, they're not coming, no matter what we do, they're graduating and they're not, so we use the Act 80 Days to cover those.
So, but don't those Act 80 Days, I'm assuming there's the two conference days, and then, of course, this in-service day, correct, that's what we're using for Act 80?
It's the first day back, it's, it's Columbus Day and Martin Luther King Day, those, those in-service days. Accounting is Act 80.
Okay, so I've done, tried to do a lot of researching, get my information straight on Act 80. And Act 80 Days would be used for the entire student body though? You can just designate it for seniors?
They could, so we typically build our calendar with a hundred and eighty-one actual student days in it, and.
Instructional days.
Instructional days.
Right.
We sort of use the Act 80 Day as a hedge, just because, you know, if we add snow days on beyond graduation, then we're always in a, we're in a situation where we get fined, then we lose subsidy because the state will request the reimbursement back that we would have earned for attendance for those seniors during that time. The law says we have to have students in session, one hundred and eighty days.
So, so let me interrupt you, because my question's right there. So if we're, we have three Act 80 Days being used for our seniors, that takes the seniors to, that takes June eighth to be a hundred and seventy-eight days of instruction.
They will, they will have a hundred and seventy-seven plus the three Act 80 Days.
Okay.
To get to one eighty.
So then the rest of the student body then goes till the thirteenth, and will have a hundred.
Well, they will technically, they will technically have one hundred and eighty days of instruction.
Right.
Instructional days.
So instructional days, correct. Yet, yes, the Act 80 Days could be hedged if we wanted to waive attendance for those, those students. But I, I think what Dr. Phillips was saying is, the other, the other number that comes into play is the hundred and eighty-nine contractual days for our staff, so our bus drivers, our aides, our, our teachers. So they all have to be here on those days to equal one eighty-nine, there is no exception. So we're, you know, the discussion was getting the students to one eighty and having, you know, meeting the, the day requirement for them. The day requirement of a hundred and eighty, the way that we get, you know, we use this as, there's a hundred and eighty instructional days, and of course, we build a hundred and eighty-one just sort of as a, as a, as a hedge against snow and whatever. The Act 80 Day is, is an exception that can be made on professional development days, not for snow.
Not for snow, though. No, I've done a lot of research.
It has to be a professional development day, and for you to then convert a PD day to an Act 80 Day, which then makes a day of learning, a professional day of learning for our staff, that actually converts it to be used as a, to count for an instructional day against students. We have to have met the threshold of hours, of nine hundred hours in elementary and nine ninety in secondary, which we've met, but again, we're still, the, the discussion was to stick with the one eighty days. The, the Thursday, which would have been one eighty-one, we are converting to a professional day of learning, so there'll be, there'll be a benefit. Dr. Winters was thinking about some things that we could do with, with all those folks, aides, bus drivers, teachers, that would be a rare opportunity to use that for that day, and then the flex day from February would get bumped.
Sure, and I think we can, we can, we can announce, if you will, the indication for Thursday is to use them as the active shooter and mental health trainings that the teachers have been asking for.
Okay, okay, um, so it's just a general statement, I think, which just needs to be made to the community, to families, you know, that, and I think it's just, it's not common knowledge that students need to be in school for a hundred and eighty days, and by, with all of the snow days that were involved this year, we were able to make some adjustments for our seniors, but all students need to go till June thirteenth to fulfill their hundred and eighty instructional days. Is that a correct statement, Dr. Phillips?
Yes.
Okay. Still get like a, sort of, and so, that's fine, um.
I was pretty clarinated here, sort of, yes.
Okay, okay, um, and what actions are being taken for next year's calendar, for the twenty eighteen nineteen calendar, to prevent, within year revisions, so families can plan accordingly, we don't have these issues arise?
Yes. Sure. There you go. What, what's been going on is we looked at the calendar, and, and again, the decisions that we're making are not arbitrary, they're not decisions that we're just sitting in a room going, well, this looks good, this looks, but, yeah. We are sitting down and looking at what we feel is best for kids, and we looked at every schedule that every other calendar was out there, there's, there's school districts that are getting, on paper, out May thirty-first. I remember, Joe, how the heck is this happening? Let's sit down and look at this. They build an Act 80 Days, they have this, they have that, and then all snow days are added to the end. Those districts are now going to May eighth and using Act 80 Days, I'm sorry, June eighth. We have districts that are going to thirteenth in our county, but districts are going to the twelfth in the county because they didn't feel the need to waive instructional days. So going into next year, we looked at what issues we had this year, we built our calendar, we're starting earlier, we're finishing, if there are the prerequisite amount of snow days that don't push us out, we'll be finishing early on a Thursday this year for the first time in a while, I believe. We are putting in, on paper, you will see nine, bit, snow days, so you will know this day, this day, this day, this day, this day, in, in sequential order. We did have, which I thought was a good discussion with the union leadership, I see Michelle, yeah, she's there, and we are putting a, a premium on flex days. And what the teachers had said was, if we're going to put a premium on flex days, don't take our flex days. So that made sense, we'll remove that as an option, so that will not be touched next year. So we. The February date, yes. So we've looked at everything we can to answer the questions of this year and try to, you know, hopefully not get into that, what really is the second week of, of June, because I think June first might be a Saturday or a Sunday, and then there's the whole week of June, we would graduate on that Thursday. And I think we would need to be into our seventh or eighth snow date to bump into the second week of June.
That's great, I, uh, two other things I want to mention, and looking at this year's calendar as well as last year, because obviously, as many of us, new board members, we didn't approve this year's cal, you know, the twenty seventeen eighteen calendar. We have approved some adjustments and revisions, but not any snow days. And Policy 803 states that board determines and approves annually the calendar, or approves the calendar annually, so I just want to make that known, that we don't, at least to my knowledge, we don't have the level of governance to, have to approve revisions if it's already stated in the calendar. And adding those snow days on to the end of the year isn't the twenty seventeen eighteen calendar.
We do bring them to the board so they're aware.
Correct, but the last board approved calendar was February twenty-first, so something, there's been changes and we haven't approved this year's calendar yet at all. So, and just since February twenty-first. Also want to make note then, also that, as far as the calendar goes, I think it, you know, as long as your faculty is, you know, your union leadership has approved it, and you feel it's best for kids. My, a couple of concerns is adding more than a hundred and eighty-one days, just kind of fail-safe it, but it sounds like you've added extra snow makeup days in there. And as far as the aesthetics of it, when you print it in black and white, you cannot see the color coding, color coding, so that's just, you know, a very minor issue. But I printed black and white mostly, and so it's very difficult to see the distinguishing colors that represent various days off or in-service or early dismissals. So I don't know if there's, I know you've done a lot of work with it to, based on things we've asked you to do, but again, I want more suggestion. And I think that if people are unhappy about the calendar or days, they need to come to public comments and speak, you know, or give, you know, give your office a call. Would you agree, Dr. Phillips?
Well, yes, people are going to be upset, I can't, they're going to have it.
Right, they're going to be upset, right.
My next comment would be, we did have a F form today at Jackson Wall, and there was a discussion of the half day rather than the two shortened days going forward. Mr. Redmond, we will have to meet with him and discuss that, because there's an issue with, if we all try to get out a half a day, it's not going to be a true half day for everybody, because we don't have one, we have three tiers, we don't have one tier. The other thing is we want to do, we do want to have input from the community, make sure parents understand that the changes that will take place and can adequately prepare for whatever childcare changes or modifications are going to be needed. I mean, you might have somebody that can be there at two but not be there at twelve-thirty, that kind of thing. So we've done that, then we've also, just this morning, I sat with some of the other superintendents, and we discussed, again, the flexible instruction on snow days, that's something we're, we're thinking about. There was a look at a three hour delay. That is a real difficult thing to do in 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 the districts our size. Some small districts can get away with it. Um, but we we were consistently looking at different ways to do things. But as far as this year goes, there was no way to prepare for what we went through and what we did was, again, and I know I'm sounding however, but what we did was best for kids because we tried to put as much education as we could within the calendar footprint. That's why we took away a flex day, that's why we had school on um Easter Monday. But then we ran out of tracks and then it was, we had to start adding to the backend.
Sure. Well, and I think, uh, based on our conversation before, you're, what's best for kids is that those three last days of instruction, um, June eleventh, twelfth and thirteenth are instructional days. And students are going to be expected to be taking their finals on those days and as well as um, learning going on in the other classrooms that they missed on those snow days, so, um, and you know, you assured me that the teachers know that as well.
I've already mentioned at the uh Jackson Wall forum that we will be putting a memo out that there was an expectation of instruction to be going on.
So I feel compelled to say this because I carpool a bunch of fifteen-year-olds around, but there's not a great appreciation for your thought around doing the right thing for kids. They're not all happy about the extension of school.
Neither would I, neither would I.
The seniors are thrilled because they don't have to do it. I I I could understand that the kids are thinking that way.
If I may, I, you know, I think the other piece that that is really important, and you know, I know, I, you know, teachers and even students will say, well, it's the end of the year, it's the last couple of days, that we don't get a meal, we don't do a whole lot on those days. You know, they're not meaningful. And I always kind of reflect back and think, yes, you know, when I was in high school, like, I looked forward to the summer because that was vacation and that was going to the pool and that was all different kinds of things. But the reality is that that's not all of our kids. And, you know, we have a sizable portion of our children who like, you know, they dread summer because they don't get to go on vacations. And, you know, their home is not a place that is, you know, peaceful and enjoyable and that kind of thing. So, you know, even if our kids are only coming for a half a day, the fact that they get to come for a half a day and get a meal and see a teacher's smiling face who cares about them, it's it's gonna mean the world to to some of those kids. And I think we have to be cognizant of that when we, you know, talk about, well, you know, we, you know, we we won't get a whole lot done those last days. Well, yeah, you know, we're still, we're still touching the lives of children and and that's why we all got into this business to begin with. And so I think, I think that's an important piece, not to, not to lose sight of.
And I think we, we also need to, as a board, though, this whole situation has made me more aware of approving the twenty eighteen nineteen calendar and making sure that, um, we're, you know, board, what's best for kids but also what's best for our taxpayers, bringing back kids for three days, paying for meals, paying for transportation, we have to consider that, too. Um, when we could tweak a little bit our Act, our our Act eighty days to not bring kids back for those three days. But that's what's best for kids. I, you know, I am an educator, I agree with that. I agree that if those three last days are being utilized appropriately and there's a lot of learning to be done yet, then so be it, you know, because we didn't pay for those, some of those other days when they, they weren't, buildings weren't running, although we were probably paying for other things like snow removal and things like that, right, Jerry? Salt trucks.
I don't have any idea.
Um, but a lot of, you know, people like to compare Exeter to other districts and what's going on in their their sister's district or their cousins or whatever. Um, and ultimately, you know, we approve the calendar annually and we need to make sure that we're comfortable with it, specifically this coming calendar. Um, and that, uh, it is what's best for kids but also what's best for our taxpayers, um, to an extent, to an extent. Because we're in, we're in for education here.
Thank you. Um, before we adjourn, are there any other issues that we want to bring to the board's attention?
Um, and speaking about the calendar, uh, we do have a parent forum coming up and I was just curious what we're gonna be discussing and maybe the community as as well.
Well, we did send, I believe the agenda was sent out. We're gonna be discussing curriculum. Um, Dr. Winters will be touching on curriculum. We will have conversation from our two coordinators, as well as I will speaking on the career pathways.
Great. And then also, um, has administration considered addressing any concerns regarding April twentieth, which is another planned national walkout?
We've been having the discussion and there's nothing being discussed right now in our building. So we're trying not to provoke an issue by publicizing it.
Thanks, Jevon.
Um, but we we have met and we are prepared to move forward if need be, but at this point, we're still not seeing any movement whatsoever. Um, we may now.
Well, that's not fair.
Are you being, are you saying I'm being serious?
No, she wasn't bringing attention to it, the way that was.
Are you saying I'm being serious?
It's already, it's already being addressed in other Brooks and Chester school districts. It's already being, superintendents are already speaking out about it. Um, so, you know, therefore it is being addressed, might not be directly for the student body, but it's being addressed in Brooks schools, that's what's already.
I understand. And we did, we did speak about it, and right now, at this point, we haven't, we're, we're prepared if the need be, but at this point, we haven't seen any indication. Looking at social media, I mean, everybody in the back, we we had our meeting, have we still to this point seen any indication of it on social media? Um, the students were really good in coming forward to us and expressing their feelings on the March fourteenth. Getting the date right, correct? The walk-in?
Yep.
Uh spent a lot of time with that. Um, again, we're not hearing anything to this point, so we're really not, uh, we talked about should we address it? If if there's not an issue, we we don't want to provoke an issue.
Okay. And um, I'd also apologize, I used the restroom when you were all discussing about student council and bringing a student onto the board. Um, and I truly believe if we're going to, and I'm not sure exactly what was, what, how that ended, so I apologize. Um, but I believe if we're gonna bring a student onto the board because a student is living and reading the policies, so is a teacher in the district. So I think we need to consider that as well. I'm not saying I'm an advocate for it, but I'm saying if we're going to, there should be a balance as far as that goes. Bringing a student, we also need the teacher voice. And now we're, you know, potentially mixing, being an elected board member uh versus context and interest. And so I just wanted to break that up.
They're the aren't. They're the aren't.
Any other topics that we wanna consider?
Dave, could you just give like a thirty-second overview of the uh meeting that we had last night related to the ad hoc transportation?
She'll be glad to, and we've got other members uh here of that committee that can speak as well. But we did uh have our first, our very first ad hoc transportation committee meeting last night. It was primarily an organizational meeting. Uh, and the agenda was established to kind of provide us with things like timelines, responsibilities, um, goals, uh, direction uh for our administration in terms of the kind of information that we we need to move forward. Um, you know, some planning and and it was, so it was, I I I think it was, it was an interesting meeting because it was well attended by our bus drivers. We probably had twenty-plus, twenty-plus bus drivers who were in attendance and they were very interested, they were very polite. Uh, they, they want to continue to be engaged in in what's happening and and the future of transportation in the district, obviously. Um, you know, we are not uh planning on going through this process in a very rapid manner. I think we want to be deliberate, we want to look at every possible option. And ultimately, I think the goal of this committee is to kind of come to the board with a recommendation that reflects the the most efficient and um financially appropriate uh means of providing transportation for our students. Uh, and that's, that's pretty much how we resolved it yesterday with, um, you know, not, not a decision-making meeting, obviously, but a a meeting where we're gonna move forward with um bringing in people who are gonna help us understand more. I think uh Mr. Wegman is uh, has been asked to maybe uh appear at our next meeting. I'm not sure if that was a surprise from Mr. Wegman or not, but.
I didn't ask him yet.
Right. It is now.
But, you know, part of the discussion was just, we want to learn more about the operation of the transportation system as it currently exists in in the district so we can be, you know, as informed as we can in terms of what currently happens. And we also, I think, as the next step, probably anticipate a a tour of the facility for our committee. Uh, but that's, that's pretty much where we are at this point right now. Anything else from the committee members?
The next meeting is the twenty-third, six-thirty here, in the PD room.
Twenty-third, six-thirty, in the PD room.
Not the thirtieth.
The thirtieth.
Yes.
It's gonna be every two weeks.
Every other Monday the meetings are gonna occur.
I I just, I also want to just for the purpose of uh just informing board members, there is advocacy day and Harrisburg V S B A has invited all board members to attend. Hunter and I are gonna attend. Um, and if anyone else would like to join us, you're certainly welcome. Uh, you just need to uh register in advance. We'd be glad to carpool with you. Those are the other comments.
That is a good point, though. The facilities meeting has been switched from the twenty-third to the thirtieth due to the transportation, so thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
Any other comments for, from board members?
What, what's the date of the parent community forum? Nineteenth.
Yeah.
So I don't.
Is it this Thursday?
Next, it's the nineteenth.
The nineteenth.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, right here.
Yeah, okay. And prior to that is the STEM community.
Prior to that is the STEM community partnership, I think, from six to seven.
I thought that was on the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, right, as well. That's the fair, that's the STEM fair.
That's the, that's, that's.
We have a meeting with business people that come together to just help support the STEM program.
Um.
So we meet them monthly, give or take. Um, so that meeting will take place prior to the committee forum.
And then, just a reminder for board members, we do have an executive session following the uh, the meeting this evening. Uh, if there's no other business, we'll, we'll adjourn.